He called.
Oh, was he? The wife over there?
No, I had my annual cardiology cardio last check.
I gotta go.
I didn't see where it is.
One of Columbia.
This year.
Oh, it's not your. They said I was super bad shape. You know what she told me though?
You know what's funny?
She was asking me what I ate.
I'm almost like.
Five thirty, ready to go.
Almost.
Stop there for.
Yeah.
Changing her mind.
Yeah.
Still could have been late.
Yeah.
Go ahead and get started. Um, I think we'll go ahead and get the delinquent accounts out of the way. Everybody should have a copy of their uh.
Oh, seeking point.
We're gonna have to make toys or anything tonight? Wondering.
That was a peril.
Yeah. I was gonna say, the city hall is kind of being transformed here in the last week or so.
Bean.
It's called deck the halls.
They're not done yet.
Yeah, save that. Uh, anyway, uh, the link accounts, everyone should have a copy. Uh, it is basically, uh, where we're gonna send the link account to the auditor of Lincoln County, to the auditor of Lincoln County, and I think it's around the property that skipped out, I believe. And so I think somehow that's, that's what we forward.
Pretty steep.
So is that okay with everyone to forward that to the auditor?
Please do.
We'll go ahead and start on the agenda topics, wastewater, uh, update on Fox Run and Sayo Listation Removal. Uh, we're close to, very close to completion on that. Uh, couple items that were, weren't completed, that just recently got completed were, uh, we actually moved the generator from Fox Run and, and took it over to Woodlands. Uh, we demoed the wet well out, uh, capped the pipes off. We did a total man drill test on, on all the, all the pipes that passed. Uh, we ground, grounded the jack and board section, uh, had to be completed, and that's done now. Grounded the manholes, chimney seals needed to be completed, those are done now. Uh, we fixed the curb in front of Sayo Drive, that's completed now. And we repaired the conduit on the skater system at, uh, at the, um, Route seventy-nine in your station. So, uh, we're probably getting pretty close to, uh, completion on that. Uh, I imagine I'll be getting some more information. I did have a gentleman, a Mr. Darst on Saddle Brook, I went over to see him today. He's complaining about some trees that he feels that were knocked down, that weren't cleaned up behind his residence at six thirty, sixteen thirty-two. I told him that, uh, I couldn't do anything about it now, but I said, either I will have the contractor go in and make that right, or we will clean it up if I can get the contractor to do it. Contractor saying that those trees were already down, and they shoved them back against, you know, they were already laying on the ground. This guy's saying they weren't, they're not on his property, but he doesn't want to look at it. As in his back.
Any photos?
I just.
Pre, pre-construction photos?
Yeah.
Dana, have a photo?
Yeah, trouble is, is that there's tree line back there then in brush, and you couldn't see anything. And then when he, when they knocked down the tree line for, you know, and cleaned everything up, then he's.
But it's not his property.
It's not on his property. He's a nice gentleman, you know?
Have to say tough, buddy.
He said what happened was, uh, he, uh, the boss that was on the job went down so far, and then when the boss left the job, they didn't finish cleaning, just, and it does look that way. When you walk down the back of his property, everything else is kind of cleaned up, and then you get to his yard. It was like, it gets, it was like brush, and it was like limbs hanging, you know, and stuff that they cut off.
Friday at four thirty.
And all that, so, uh, yeah.
Is there a right of way that they're laying on?
Yeah, there's a right of way. Well, it's actually pushed off the right of way now. Actually, it's on the Hoskis and ground. I don't think it's really, I mean, to me, we can go in there and clean it up pretty quick. It's not gonna take a lot, so just do it.
If, if it looks like, if it looks like our contractor, you know, failed to be consistent in the job that they did, then we can either ask the contractor to do it,
That's what we're gonna try first.
Or we can do it ourselves.
But this contractor may buck me a little bit on it. If he does, then, I already talked to the guys, guys, but I.
Just remember if he does.
Yeah.
Just remember.
Oh, yeah.
Next time.
Yeah.
What goes around comes around. Well, that's how I feel.
Amen. They're, they're never.
Sure.
I just make like the.
Yeah.
That's right.
Change orders.
Change orders.
That's, that's a buzzword.
How about a change order?
Yeah, I agree.
Nurse favor.
Yeah.
Prevailing wage.
So anyway, I wanted to let you know what was going on with Fox Run. Um, the wastewater plant, I'll give you a little update on that. Uh, we're doing yearly inspections and repairs of all the heating units inside of all the buildings. Went through all of those, those are completed. Uh, we had a failure on a jet mix pump, um, number three on the aeration tanks. Uh, we had a standby pump, so we pulled that one, uh, put the standby pump in, it's up and running. I think it was down by a day.
Uh, was that on?
It was on, on number three jet mix pump. Right here. Uh, number three jet mix pump, pull pump. Uh, sewer plug, uh, we had two of them, one was on Field Point Road last month. We also had one, uh, Saturday before I wrote this up on Perkage Road. So, uh, there was no. There was no backups or anything, so everything, I mean, they got.
How do we know they were plugs?
People call in and their drains aren't draining very well, so they'll call in and say that, that, you know, when they may have had an experience in the past.
Backed up in the basement or something?
Yeah, they may have had an experience where, you know, you know, it stopped draining like it usually does. So normally they call us first, I tell everybody to call us first before they call Roto-Rooter out or anything like that. We can make sure that our mains clear, and then if it's clear, then it's in their lateral, and then they, they can have Roto-Rooter playing that lateral. So, anyway, so we had two, uh, inspections of permitted industrial users to number four, and the process of doing that right now, uh, everybody remembers what that is, is we go in once a year, all the industries, and make sure that they're not adding any process that we don't know about, some kind of chemical or something that we don't know about, or make sure that their pretreatment that they do have is working correctly. Uh, so some of those are Kaiser Aluminum, Port Authority, Andyset Corporation, WS Packaging, Ashland Incorporated, and Samuel Strapping. Uh, we are pretty much through most of these now, I think the only one we have left is Andyset. Um, City of Heath Quarterly Industrial User Violations, I completed that report. That is a, uh, violation report that goes to the EPA. We didn't have any violations, but, uh, I still have the total report, and I'll still have to send it into the EPA. So that's completed for this report. Uh, we're getting ready to, the next topic is, uh, aligning of the sewers at the post office. We did one half of that last year, if you remember, I talked about that. We're gonna do the, the other half after Thanksgiving of this year. Uh, Inova Liner does that for us, uh, the gentleman's name is John Curtis, and he will start that, we will go in Monday and jet, uh, jet that portion of pipe and clean it, and then he'll come back in behind it and line it with the liner. Reason why is that portion of pipe is really broken up there, and so we're gonna get that completed.
How many you jet it?
That could cause more problems, but at least they're on site, so if something happens.
Yeah.
How long the distance has it gone?
Um, I think it's about. It's a couple hundred feet.
Where'd you say it was at?
It's directly behind the post office. Directly behind the post office. We did one half of it last year, and we're doing the other half this year. It's about a twenty thousand dollar job.
If we end up jetting chunks of pipe down the line, that, that's, that's not a good.
No. No, it's not a good thing. Like I said, if we do break something.
Yeah, all the roots cleared out in that area. Did we do that this past year or something?
Yeah, yeah, and then I think that section of pipe was also where we foamed it.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that was done.
It's been two years since we did the other.
Yeah, it's been a year since we did it. Actually, it was a year to this, probably right around this time last year when we did it.
Tate, I have a question for you. So, they lined the main. What do they do for the laterals that come into it?
Don't go up under the lateral so far. Uh, it forms kind of, it doesn't go all the way, just, just, just a brief portion of that.
Okay.
But, you know, once we get into lateral, that's theirs.
Yeah.
You know, so, uh, you know, if there's a problem with the lateral, then they pay it ahead before it's fixed. And that's how we can always tell, you know, and if we got a problem is, you know, the first, we, if there's a, someone calls in and says we have a plug, then we'll go, the first manhole upstream and the first manhole downstream. We're blowing water in, then it's not our problem. If it's backed up in one of the manholes, you know, it'll actually back up, you'll see, and then we know it's our problem.
So this lining that we're running through the main, actually will line that beginning part of the lateral?
Kind of does, uh, just the very beginning.
It just goes in, just as they pump the stuff, it goes up the lateral a little bit, and then expands, right?
Expands, seals it all, just to protect our pipe. But, you know, it doesn't go up very far. And then they'll actually go back and have this thing that cuts it, and they'll, they'll cut it a little bit to make sure that it's clear, and they'll, they'll camera it and everything. Make sure that after they're done, that everything's done, clear. They have everything they wanna do.
When you have that done, you don't have too many plugs in, do you?
Not usually after they do that. Uh, we don't have a lot of, uh, you know, because the roots and stuff can't get in. Uh, now, what will actually happen is people's laterals, the roots will get into people's laterals and come into the main.
Yeah.
Our main, and actually causes problems. Uh, that's what we have to go through when we actually jet it.
That one guy came over on our street, and he told me, he says, mister, I don't know who you are, but he says, I would advise you to cut that maple tree down in your front yard, because that'll get into your water and sewer. I had it cut down next week, it was about two feet.
We have people that, that have problems that absolutely refuse to make the trip, even though, I mean, there'll be, there'll be a tree sitting right on top of it.
Every three or four years, I can, I can call Roto-Rooter time, come on out, you know? The roots are in again, and he goes through it, and seventy-five dollars and.
But you're, you have septic system.
Yeah, I might have a septic system, yeah.
See, what's bad about that is if you run septic system, then you can actually cause a backup and someone else's line because of your tree.
Yeah.
So.
Mine's far enough from anything, you know, way out there.
I beautified my backyard and put a maple tree on both sides of mine, actually.
I have a new line back there now. It's in my yard.
Okay, uh, that kind of concludes the wastewater. Uh, does anyone have any questions for me or anything on the wastewater?
Uh, I had a question on that. One, where you check those industrial users? We don't have to check, uh, where you.
Maritorial rock?
No, because they're actually on the city. Now, years ago, they were on the heat, and we moved them out, this is way before May, but, uh, and then Newark, they went on Newark, and then what Newark made them do is put in the pretreatment, which is what we probably should have done. They put in the pretreatment, then we could accept it their waste. So I don't know what the circumstances were back then or what it was.
That's what Butch told, uh, Maritor then, you know, they said, you may have to pay for a pretreatment plan.
And that, and they did.
And they did, they put one in.
Put one in, and what we should have done is, they were already hooked up to us and everything, we should have just said, well, put in the pretreatment and work with them, and then we could have maintained getting it.
I don't think that engineer firm would have, Dan, I forget their, I don't think they knew what they were doing. They couldn't answer a lot of council's questions.
So anyway, I think we were planning it safe, and we just said, how'd you go? Because we didn't want to violate properly, we'd probably have a problem with the pipe maybe at that time. Who knows what was going on at that time? That's been probably twenty years ago. Okay, any other questions on wastewater? Okay, we'll go ahead and start on the water. Uh, I wanted to update you on the survey that I'm doing on Lincoln Township. With one week remaining, we have received a hundred and twenty-two surveys, I got about twenty of them on my desk right now that I haven't went through yet. Uh, out of those hundred and twenty-two surveys that I've received, thirty-seven are interested, ten maybes, and seventy-five not interested. Uh, there was a total of two hundred and eighty surveys, so we haven't even really received half the surveys. I don't know if we will receive them.
John, did the ones that said they were not interested, did they put any reason on there? I mean, could the tap fee have been a part of it?
Oh, yeah.
They didn't realize they could pay it partially or on.
What I'm gonna do is I have a spreadsheet that I've already started, and it'll give the person's name, it'll give, uh, what they may be interested, not interested, it'll give their comments. And I had to condense some of the comments, or if I didn't, uh, had a lot of interesting comments that you can. Then what I'll do is I'll formulate them into additions. I'll put them into additions so that we'll be able to know exactly, like, say, Lamar Heights. Uh, we'll know exactly how many people were for it, how many people were against it, how many people maybes. And then we'll break it down that way, because there's a possibility we may be able to section, little section out and say, you know, it may be worth us to give water to Lamar Heights, it may be worth us to give water to Lynnville Road or Vicki Lane or, or something like that, just to notice. A lot of the things is I've already, I just put in a new well. Some people said, um, uh, you know, you were, uh, you did, your traffic cameras and, and speed, your stoplights and speed cameras have failed, now you're trying to get money from me. One comment was, Mayor Geller tried to annex it years ago, it's not gonna happen now.
Sour grapes, they must have a heavy, uh, celery.
This isn't all of them, but I mean, you just get a few, you know, you get a few that just, you know, have to have some reason why. And then a lot of people say, well, I'm already, I'm on well, I like my well water, but what they don't realize is we have well water. You know, they probably don't pay attention to that, and then, and some people are just against, you know, chemicals in their water. I don't want chemicals in my water, they don't like boring. You know, they don't like, I mean, there's some of that stuff. So it's kind of interesting to see, you know, uh, the different comments. What's really weird is, and I told the mayor, uh, the first group that came in, I'm like, wow, this is unbelievable, we're gonna get, we're gonna just take. The people that wanted it, man, they turned theirs in right away, you know? And then now, it's kind of, the people that are against it, you know, the first like forty-one, thirty-five, forty, I got, I'm like, dang, I can't believe this. You know, and they'll comment, you know, just, they're wanted.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, yeah. And then the others, you know, as they come in, it's just been getting a little bit worse, not as, it's getting kind of a little depressing, you know? Anyway, it's, uh, it's interesting, um.
It's a good rate of return for surveys.
Yeah, so far, I mean, you know, a hundred and twenty-two out of two hundred and eighty, we're not done yet. Hopefully, we get several this week yet. And, uh, I've got about fifteen of them in there with the wrong address or something, for some reason, they came back. So I gotta find out why that is and reveal it.
Did, did they have to put a stamp on to send it back, or? It was already, okay. I was just surprised that seventy-five people took the time, and they weren't able to even tell you that, you know? I remember most people said, eh, you know, stuff like that. So, I mean, that's unusual.
Oh, yeah, we had to stamp on, maybe it's as easy as possible.
And they got their two cents worth.
Well, that's, yeah, that's.
Yeah, they got, they got to vent a little bit. They, they had something, you know, they might, like that one person probably got a speeding ticket, or a, or a red light ticket or something, so he wanted to vent that out, you know?
He'll go to his grave with that.
Yeah, it's all good, I mean, it's all good.
Hey, John, when you, after you do the spreadsheet, maybe give the addresses to Eddie and have him put on the map?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you can kind of see the cluster, because I'd be curious to see if some neighbors got to get, you know what I mean? It's like sometimes, you know, it's like, oh, these people all want it, but these people are here, you know, or vice versa, it's like.
Yeah, because when I would get them, when I would get them, I'd get a group of them in, in that day, and they would all be against it.
They all huddle at the fence.
They all huddle. And then the next day, I'd get a, you know, I'd get, you know.
I just, yeah, right.
They didn't talk.
Breaking the leaves and saying, what do you think about that water?
They filled out the workbench or with the, you know, with the rigs, so. Like I said, it's, it's all good, it's all interesting. And when we get everything done, uh, see where we stand and see if there's any interest, uh, we'll go from there. One thing I can tell you, though, is I'll bet if we run it down the road, I'm not gonna say they're all gonna tap on it once, but as soon as they have trouble with their well, they're gonna tap on it.
Oh, yeah.
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 Yeah, it'd be like you trying to fix.
Now, whether we wanna decide whether we wanna wait for that, or do we want, but I guarantee you, because.
Oh, yeah.
They're not gonna wanna put money in their well when they can just tap on it right now.
Okay, so that lesson's presumed.
And then working, then drilling the well, yeah, about, probably less than half the cost, probably.
Are we gonna survey elsewhere besides the contention?
You know, I, I wanted to, I kind of want, I'm kind of interested in some other areas. So, you know, we'll get these results back, and then there's maybe a couple other areas that I'm kind of.
West?
Close, uh, west, also, some off Route seventy-nine, it's real close. Some additions back in there, so, uh, where the golf ball is, I know there's a housing back in there, it's got about fifty homes, it's all done. Yeah, I mean, I don't know, just have to see. So, okay. Um, we'll go ahead and go to, uh, update on the water plant. Um, we have a monthly meeting on the twenty-seventh of this month, I think that's the day before Thanksgiving. Concrete's completed on the new clarifier and the walls, we actually filled that full of water, and it's being, uh, tested, uh, today. So, uh, we filled that full of our water, and it's this hole, and it looks like a big swimming pool out there. It was warmer out.
It's skating on the problem, yeah.
Yeah, you know, we could make a skating weekend. Uh, also, there's a lot of electrical work going on where they're laying conduits from the high-service pumps into the, uh, clarifier and, and, yeah. Also, wanted to mention to you, I, I didn't get it, but I'm gonna copy this, but a couple things that we talked about in our last meeting. I gave Dick a copy of that, says Crook Brothers on it, but a couple things I wanted to mention. I, I noted that, uh, clarifier number three had been taken down, and there's rust showing in some places on the, on the clarifier that they just painted. It was mentioned that to Russ, particularly on the drum angle holding up the wheels at the webs. Uh, Crook Brothers suggested after number four is running, you take a good look at number three. Painter's on site, and they'll, they'll correct that, it's a problem, they didn't get sandblasted or nothing like that. It was also noted that, uh, Steve and Mike, uh, with the city had been contacted by the painter's insurance company, and they, we had some overspray down there, uh, on some of the guy's vehicles, so, uh, they had been contacted by the painter's insurance company, and they're already taking care of that in the process. It was also noted that the line hauling was, uh, not interfering with the construction activities on the site of the water plant. Uh, we discussed and request for additional clarifier effluent piping, Crook Brothers leads more details on the pipe we put tight, or stamped, et cetera. We, when I mentioned we, that is the, uh, engineering, design engineer, her name's Wei Chung. To look into this and let us know, John Geller questioned the pipeline ports and water going stagnant, so, so we discussed the possibility of putting a line on. And what this is all about is, and, and I'm kind of getting feedback from you guys and see how you feel about it. There's a, there's a pipe, a thirty-inch pipe, that goes, that would, we would extend that on out to another clarifier for future, for the future. It was not on the design for work to be done on this upgrade. It would be a change, a change order from amount to somewhere between twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. We may not see that another clarifier go in for fifteen, twenty years, thirty years. Do we want to make a change order to spend that money to extend that line out there? Uh, or do you feel that, uh, if we keep things kind of in order and make sure everything's kind of off to the side and give them ability to dig that up in the future, connect on to that? Basically, it would just make, if we, when we have the next plant expansion, it's gonna make it simpler for them to connect on to their, to the pipe. But it is kind of pricey, whenever you deal with someone, uh, on a change order, prices go up a lot higher than what you want them to be.
But it might be pricier when you go to take and add that.
When we go to add it on.
Fifteen years, ten, fifteen years from now.
Down the road, it may be price, you know, it's gonna be pricier, and then you don't know what you're gonna get into in costs.
So you'd be, you'd be locking in where future expansion would take place?
Basically, you know, we've always had a drawing, and this is kind of a drawing, I don't know if everybody can see this. This is our. Right here is our, will be our two, I'm sorry, right here will be our two new clarifiers that, that'll exist. In the future, the other two clarifiers would go out here.
So your connector would be in the middle?
Yeah, what you're gonna do is you're gonna take this pipe that's here that feeds these two pipes, and you're gonna extend this on out, so that in the future, these two clarifiers will have, we won't have to dig down to the bottom to, to get, tap on to the twenty-inch, thirty-inch pipe.
It's already there.
To have the effluent from these clarifiers to go into the treatment process. Okay, uh, I'm still kicking it around, you know? I just kind of wanted to give a little info from you guys if I came to you with a thirty thousand dollar change order.
Is it easier to do it now because it's already all torn up?
That's correct, because the hole's open right now.
So the cost benefit analysis is essentially, it's a construction severance now.
It's, it's.
Twenty years from now, the price is gonna be double.
Yeah.
What kind of?
And, uh. The only, the only thing I'm gonna tell you is, is, you know, you know, we're four million, we're producing about a million free. If you produce four million, so whenever we get to that four million point is when the, you know, close to that four million point is when we would. So, you know, it could be twenty years down the road.
It might be ten years.
Could be, it might be ten years, that's possible, if we really, but.
It could be a hundred. I was gonna say, it could be never.
Could be never, that's what I mean, it could be never. I mean, we could spend the thirty thousand dollars and it could be never.
Same concept as the infrastructure, we put along seventy-nine, everything else for the commercial, industrial, futures, develop. It's the same concept. Equilite dot com.
You know, my, my, my general feeling is, I'd probably like to go ahead and hook it up. But I kind of want your guys, a little bit of feedback from you guys too, as if, you know, they come with you with this change order. And first of all, I gotta make sure that the money's there, because I know we borrowed, we borrowed so much and it was a little bit left over. We were pretty much, we were under the engineer's estimate from what we borrowed, but I gotta find out exactly how much that is before.
How's the price, like, compare, like, you know the length of extra pipe you need to go in there, the cost, I mean, whatever else and stuff? I'm just, I mean, is it like triple cost, or, I mean, I mean, are they really gouging us on it because they wanna do it, or mean, is it some, you know?
About twenty-five percent, if you just hired someone else.
I mean, are they interested in doing it or they don't wanna do it?
What if we did it ourselves, what if our distribution crew did it?
I wouldn't even let them get in there.
Is that right?
About once everything's put back. Now, we could get them in there now, and we talked about that.
That's what we're saying.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what you're saying.
Get them in there now.
Yeah, because you're talking about them putting pipe in now.
I thought you meant later on, but.
No.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Couldn't they do it?
It's pretty deep.
How do you seal that pipe off so it doesn't have water, or you're staying, I mean, how are you?
That's part of the expense there is the valve.
That's what I wondered, that's.
That's what I suggested in the meeting, I suggested putting a valve in there so that it's turned off and shut it off. Because what happens is you don't want that water coming back into that main, it's set in there.
Right.
And then for some reason, that water goes back out into the treatment process, so probably the chlorine would take care of it, you know, at the end, or the filtration. You know, if it did seep back out of that area, but still it's water that could be in there for no lord knows how long, whenever we take everything down and, 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 you know, and if it drains properly and, and all that, so.
How do you exercise that valve?
We, we exercise all of our valves all the time.
So, that wouldn't be a problem then?
Okay, is that steel pipe or?
Well, actually, they're talking, yeah, actually, it is, uh, it's ductile iron valve.
Ductile iron.
It's steel pipe, they call it ductile iron.
How much do you have in that account, John?
I gotta go, I can't, offhand, I can't, I mean, I'm, I'm just starting this process, because we just talked, started talking about it. I'm, I'm gonna have to go to Keith and find out exactly how much he borrowed.
You don't, you don't think our people can do it though? That backhoe can't get down deep enough or not? Even though it might be, it's dug out on one end, isn't it?
Yeah.
And they get down there?
They're starting the backfill, we're starting the backfill now, so.
Are they doing any tests against that, that valve, if they put the valve, right now, I assume there'd just be a plug on the end of that line, and not a valve, right?
There'll be a valve and then a plug.
That, I mean, they, they are putting the valve in, or they're, without this action?
That includes a valve.
No, like I said, without this, right now, if you didn't do this.
If you didn't do that.
You have the line coming, and it's a plug, right? It just kept up.
Well, it actually, I don't know, I think it tees some way and goes to both. They'll have to put in a fitting and extend it on out. So, yeah, it won't exist, there won't be anything.
There is a valve that shuts off to where you'd wanna expand it.
What I'm wondering is, is if, if we go in there and tie onto their pipe, and then some later there's problem, a leak or something, or something like that, then. Then you're gonna have, saying, well, it, it, what we did was fine, and the city came in there and messed up.
I was just gonna talk about that, I don't know by our contract, you know, if they opened that hole up and all of that, I gotta go to the contract and look in there and see what we can do and what we can't do. You know, if we start messing with their stuff like you just mentioned, you know, connecting on the stuff. You know, if we start messing with their stuff like you just mentioned, you know, connecting on the stuff, and then would that void any kinda lurny or any kinda problem we have down the road on stuff that they've already worked on? I mean, that's a possibility, there's a lot of things that we're gonna have to check on before.
Let me ask you this, where's that money coming from? We borrowed it, we borrowed the money for this project. So, what John was saying is, is that he needs to make sure that if we do this change order, that doesn't blow our budget for this project.
If we don't spend that.
Then we pay it back and we don't pay interest on it. Okay. Yeah. All right, what, what is our daily production now?
One point three, average, now, we peak at one point eight.
Okay.
Like in the summer months, sometimes we'll go one point eight, one point nine.
Okay.
Average for the year is one point three.
Okay. And that's with?
Four million.
About how many, about how many units does the Port Authority use in water every month?
I'm gonna ask a hard question. I know that new.
It's more than five hundred, right?
Yeah, actually, there's two of them, and you were asking me that the other day, is Kaiser aluminum and the Port Authority, both of those. And I know we were talking about.
Both of those use five, more than five hundred a month?
Yes.
Okay.
And I know we were talking about possibly doing some things with that.
Yes.
And I can talk to you a little bit about it, because it's.
So, right now, we have two major industrial users that use enough water each month to qualify for a discount on whatever portion of the water they use that's above five hundred.
That's correct.
And right now, at our peak, we're not even half our capacity.
That's correct.
If we were to add two more industrial users like that, we probably still wouldn't be near our capacity, right?
The industrial user that you were talking to me about the other day would add an additional thirty-five thousand gallons per day.
Okay.
To give you an idea.
Which is nothing compared to our capacity. See, here's what I'm thinking, John, will we ever get to four million gallons a day?
That's why, that's why I've been struggling.
And, and if we did, and if we did, wouldn't our operation be in a financial position where running this pipe, even if the extra cost would be a drop in the bucket?
That's right, Dick.
Good point.
I mean, I, that's.
That's a good point, John.
That's kinda what I'm saying.
And that's why I've kinda, you know, you know, I've talked it over with some of the operators, I've talked it over, you know, and that's kinda, what we kinda, kinda discussed, exactly what you're saying.
It's really gonna take a bunch to get us up over that four million. I mean, a lot of.
Well, yeah, I mean, from an economic development standpoint, we're fine in capacity. I mean, we could add two more high-end users and still not be anywhere near our capacity. So, from an economic development standpoint, there's not a need.
Might be premature.
Right now, yeah. Um, and, and if we get to that point, if we're cranking out on a peak day, if we're cranking out three point five mil.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I, I think we could probably spend a few more bucks to.
And go ahead and do it then.
Yeah.
Because the revenue number's gonna be so much.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but we're gonna use about a third right now.
Yeah.
Not on the peak, but a.
Yeah.
Overall.
On average. And I think, that, that's my opinion.
My personal opinion is, we need to play the game and ten years down the road worry about it as opposed to today, because we're not real flush.
If, if we, if we reach a point.
Tim said there, you know, if you monkey with something, what does it do to you?
Yeah, what does? That worries me too, and they, you know, the contract, we'll have to go back and watch, okay, if we start bringing our employees in, we're.
They'll do it too, they'll.
If we reach a point where we feel as though it's in the city's interests to drop another clarifier, then we're cranking out enough water that running that pipe and dropping that clarifier, that won't be nothing.
Sure, it would be.
Hey, John, what about like the raw water, in order to use another clarifier, I mean, need that, could, would we have to start using the other well field and do all that stuff, I mean?
Give you an idea, um, our well field down there now is supposed to be able to produce five million gallons a day.
Really?
Yeah, the other well field is close to that too. So, each one of these units are two, do two million gallons, so you got four, you got two right now, so you can do four million. Whenever you go to six million, you would add another one. Okay, well, actually, anything over four, you would add another clarifier.
And about that time, we need another clarifier, we're gonna be needing to use that other well field probably because you're gonna be drawing.
Because our capacity is six mil, but our raw capacity will be five.
South Fork, yeah, so, right. I'm just saying, and if, we need that, and if we need that much water, like the mayor mentioned, I mean, I think you're gonna have money or you're gonna be expecting.
Being fat sitting.
To come in, so to pay for it, or at least I'll pay for it.
Your money's gonna be there.
We're not gonna get caught blindsided with a two million gallon a day user. I don't think we will, um, and so.
It would be nice.
The trend, the trend.
The trend nowadays is your big water users don't exist like they used to.
No.
They're, they're smaller industrial users, they do, some of them do use some water, I'm gonna tell you, but, uh, for cooling and so forth. But your big plants just.
Yeah.
They're just not.
Well, that's the thing, we, we know the Port Authority uses a lot of water for that operation. We know Kaiser uses a lot of water for that operation.
That's correct.
Even with those in play, we're nowhere near capacity.
Kaiser has a well?
Yes.
They do.
Oh, do they have, they have processed water?
They do.
See, that's another thing, for company, for, for processed water, company probably just sink their own well.
I mean, they do have, I mean, they've, they've switched over to a lot of our water on a lot of their processes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they still do have wells on certain points of it.
Kaiser our biggest user in the city.
Yes.
And what, what are?
I thought it was the Port Authority, but it is Kaiser.
What do they use, just for comparison?
That's what I was asking him earlier.
I, I guess I should have offed on my head.
What was that dollar about again? That you're talking?
About thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty thousand? See if we, if it tripled.
You'd still be.
And that'd be less than a hundred thousand dollars, today's money. And with that mu, that much, with that much being produced every day, for us to need to do that, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be a problem.
I think we're, I mean, this is why I threw it out, this is why I threw it out here, because.
We're being very proactive.
You know, we did the exact same thing down at the water plant, I mean, I threw it out to the operators and stuff and we, the conversations are very much like what we're having right here in this room.
Now, if you had to tear out a, like, tear one of them out to get to the pipe, to do, where you had to take one down to do, then it would be a no-brainer. But if you can get to that pipe in the future, even taking out concrete, whatever, but.
This meeting, this meeting I have on the twenty-seventh, we're gonna discuss this a little bit with Kirk Brothers. And what I'm gonna try to get them to do is, with the new lines and stuff that could be in the road, we're gonna try to make sure that they keep them off the one side. So that if we do have to go down there and dig that, that up and expose that, that we won't have everything hella or skeleary.
Yeah.
We wanna make sure that everything is kinda in some kind of order.
Right.
Uh, and they just don't throw stuff back in there.
Yeah.
So, the meeting we have, uh, Wednesday, uh, that is what we're gonna do.
Make sure we get that accurately mapped.
Right.
You need Eddie involved, get Eddie involved, let's make sure we get that accurately mapped.
We know exactly.
In the future, we know where.
Well, we're just gonna have to ask them.
Yes, in ten years, a goodly portion of the year. And then, oh, he would forget to have it, and he has like Eddie.
I'll ask you another question.
He probably will be here in ten years.
Well, Kaiser, should they ever fold up and leave or somebody would buy it out and didn't need that water? Should we look at a way of buying that water from them or having them donate it to us, or do we, does the quality?
You're talking about their wells? Their production water, that, that they, at Kaiser? Well, we'd have, we'd have to pump them from their water.
Their water's terrible.
They are in a different aquifer than we're in in this city.
Yeah, you know what that was?
They're in the middle aquifer and we're in the bottom aquifer.
Switch for a reason, let's tighten for a reason. We have some brownfield issues that are.
And then these fields back here are.
It's one of these waters, like, problems with.
That's right.
Chemicals.
Yeah, it's, it's one of them.
I know, I know, the Port Authority definitely does, I don't know about Kaiser, Kaiser's not that far from the Port Authority. A lot of their, but, you know, I, I would have to be very, very.
Yeah, there's a difference between potable water and non-potable water.
Industrial water. So, yeah, I, I don't think it would make sense, Cleveland, uh, we would have to really be hurt.
I'd ask you that.
We'd have to really be hurt.
They, when I was working with the Air Force Base, we thought about that, thought of Air Force water. And at that time, I said, no, because of the quality of water.
Increased birth and he's a pre-armed kid.
Let's, let's remember why the bike path had to have a bridge. Not to go across Kaiser property a few years ago. Let's think about the quality of that property back there.
Yeah, a month.
Dirt and everything.
Do we wanna even think about it? Below that, the groundwater with the bleaching and.
No, I don't. That'd give you an idea.
This would be three thousand seven hundred and fifty gallons.
A day.
A day.
Thirty-seven fifty.
Yeah. Pretty good size, either. Okay. For what it's worth. Okay.
I had laughed one of the guys, he said, that's still better than Newark's water.
Oh, yeah.
Those people in Newark took that in, they kinda, they didn't say it, they.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and, and finish up with Kirk Brothers, uh, the meeting that we had last month, uh, discuss variable frequency drives, enclosures for the high-service pumps. Uh, we are looking into, uh, we have variable frequency drives that we're putting on the high-service pumps, but, uh, some of our concern is the building that that's in has some concentrations of chlorine in it. So, we wanted to make sure that the enclosures and everything are airtight, uh, for the variable frequency drives. Also discussed with Kirk Brothers proposal on the clarifier number three effluent piping to use a T rather than a Y. Uh, BNN is looking into that, and we've already discussed that, and it is okay if they use a Y rather than a B. Uh, they're doing some testing down there now, that's a testing that I just got done telling you about where they're filling it full of, uh, water, the, uh, the existing tank. Making sure that there's no leaks or anything in the tank, and then also they've done some, uh, concrete testing for the additional, uh, concrete. Make sure that it was up to strength. And then we also reviewed the pay application, pay application for review, approved for that, for that month. Okay, now we'll go ahead and, um, go ahead and talk about, uh, say, we're in the, uh, water, okay, I talked about the monthly meeting, we're gonna go to water distribution update. Uh, basically, we had, uh, we installed new garage doors on the, uh, distribution building down there, on the lean-to section of the, uh, building. John Appleman seems to be very pleased with that, he can pull wind in his equipment now and not have the wind blowing through. So, he's actually got an area that, uh, you know, that he can keep his equipment and stuff out of the weather, it worked out around that. Uh, they were, been locating valves this month, they found nine valves that were, that weren't, uh, that had been lost. Uh, we didn't exactly know where they were, but they ended up finding them. Uh, they exercised those nine valves after they, they found them. Uh, we replaced a long tap on Northbrook Road. They definitely had to do some work on a tap that, on an existing tap that we're responsible for from the main to the box in the person's yard. Uh, we had, we've had two main breaks this month on Formwood Drive. Uh, it's mainly right in the intersection of, uh, where the trailer park is, what do you call that? Ram Creek, uh, there's two entrances there on Ram Creek. Uh, in between those two entrances is where both of these, uh, main breaks are deferred, one was just this last Friday. Uh, so, wanted to let you guys know about that.
How old was that one?
Uh, I think it was put in in the seventies, yeah, right around when we were in high school. And it's, it's supposed to be ductile iron, but, uh.
That's to be invaded then, huh?
Mid, mid-seventies, early seventies.
Amazing.
Did they made iron back then?
Is that locked?
It seems, being ductile iron, it was supposed to be.
So, a little better than we are.
I don't know, back then, we used to get like, when we had jobs, that was done with maybe certain amount of money that was available. You had to have, hire a, an employer that had so many, uh, employees that were considered, uh, how do I want to say this?
Indigent?
Yeah, maybe that would be, yeah, something like that, so, we weren't really.
Economically disadvantaged, I like that better.
Yeah.
Or.
That, or the, it, it, something like that, anyway, we, it was, it was some kinda deal like that, we had a contractor to put that in that we weren't really familiar with. Uh, at that time, and we extended that up, that Formwood Drive area there. Uh, so, um, I've noticed we've had a lot of problems with that, with that line.
Bet he's still in business too, isn't he?
I have no idea, that's been a long time, so.
Governments pay.
Might be some bad pipe, like Newark has some pipes put in at the same time, you're the supplier, that, you know, there's just bad pipe.
Like I said, it was supposed to be, it was supposed to be ductile, but we're wondering how a duct is breaking, the way this is breaking, I mean, there's these bean breaks, you know, where you. Looks like you took a saw and cut right through it. I think, they call them, they call them ringarounds.
Uh-huh.
Um, it's not a bean break, but it's, it's called a ringaround break, where like, if you just took like a saw and cut right through it, it's a perfect, you know, like it just.
Perfect break, Ken.
Perfect.
Oh, those are fun to plan.
Yeah.
Geez.
It's kinda snaps it sometimes.
That's the reason, I think it was money wells, they have Nick alone.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Nick's done a good job out there, it's, you know, we need to be around when anything like that's being put in. Um, you know, if we don't hire an inspector, uh, it's good that when we can do it ourselves, it's worked out well.
I love Nick driving around in a brand new truck, I don't understand.
Yeah. So, other than that, that's about all I have, unless anyone's got any questions.
What's this, oh, you.
Oops, Oops, Oops is, I don't, we get a lot of, uh, locations, it's, uh, Underground Utility Protection Service. So, we get phone calls off, calls on that all the time, where we have to go out and, uh, put flags in there, put like, you know, when you see a bunch of flags in the ground, that's marking our utilities.
The ones that was outside mine, you know.
Outside along my road.
We just got done marking a lot of utilities up where Clark Motors, uh, was, so something must be brewing there, uh, so.
Where else?
Uh, we've.
They did it on Linville.
There was another one.
The blue thing down by, uh, Green.
I don't know, it was for the water line.
Car, a rental car? I saw him doing that, yeah.
We've done something there, so, usually when those hoops start coming in, uh, it's a little way after line is when you start talking to people about.
It's like the earliest sign of economic development going, isn't it? Where else, rental car?
Where Enterprise used to be before the twenty.
Building up there.
By Turkey Hill.
By Turkey Hill.
On the left side.
Been running some hoops up there lately, and we've been running some hoops, uh, at the Clark Motor.
Do you know what's going on at Clark?
Other than that, that's all I have, unless anyone's got any other questions.
I wanted to, I wanted to bring up the topic, um, we, um, we've talked, uh, before about, um, our municipal tax incentive program and its, um, opportunities to, um, encourage business growth and, and how we're trying to target manufacturing sectors with that. Well, one of the things that's important to remember is that the dollars that are used for that grant, uh, program have to be non-tax revenue dollars. Tax money cannot be utilized in, in incentive like that. Now, the city has available to it the about six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of non-tax revenue that's in, uh, what is going on?
Making a deal.
That's, that's in our, um, budget stabilization fund, and that's from the traffic camera fines that we have. Now, we don't have any other, um, we don't really have any sources of non-tax revenue in the city. Our fees, our, our inspection fees, our application fees, and co, all of these costs that other municipalities have. To help fund a program like this, we keep ours very low, which is good. I mean, that's why, that's one of the reasons why Heath has so much of a retail and commercial base. Is because it's not expensive for a business shop, a restaurant, whatever, you know, to, to locate in the city, and that's good. One of the things that I'm exploring right now, and I, I've got, I've got a concept in my mind, but I need to be able to put it down on paper. In order to be able to present it to you guys. Revenue from utility payments is a non-tax revenue source. That some municipalities use to fund. Infrastructure and incentive programs for economic development.
Money from utility payments.
From water and wastewater payments.
Well, I pay my water bill, it's a non.
That is not a tax. That's a, that's a, that's basically a service that you're paying for. So, um. If, just roughly, if. We had one nickel. Per. Unit. Of water sold. And one nickel per unit of wastewater.
Bills.
That would generate roughly seventy thousand dollars a year. That could be, that could go into a fund that could be used for not just. Economic development incentive agreements, but also infrastructure used for economic development. Now, there used to be a day in, in time where. A developer. Would be solely responsible for paying for. Roadways. Utilities, you know, those type of things for a, for like an industrial park or, or, or something like that. In this day and age, that's not the most competitive approach to take. Now. One thing to think about. In this concept. The idea behind this would be not for residential development growth, but for. Manufacturing development growth, I mean, that's kind of what we've targeted, right? As we discussed earlier. Manufacturers. Create an opportunity for high-end users. I mean, I'm sure Kaiser probably uses more water than all of my housing development combined in, in a month. Yeah, easily, they would, they would be doing that. It's users that help put downward pressure on utility rates. The more users you have, the more customers you have, the more service you're selling. The less you need to charge everybody for that service. So. This concept would also go towards something that would help to overall. Put a downward pressure on future utility rate increases. If we're able to attract, I mean, pretty much any, almost any industry is gonna be more of a water user than.
Residential.
Than residential. Yeah, yeah.
How about commercial?
Well, that, that, that too, potentially, yeah, I mean, I don't know. Obviously, the Indian Mount Mall is our largest commercial, single commercial development that we have. I don't know, I don't know what their usage numbers are.
I need to, I'm gonna. I'm gonna do a sheet together, so that we, when we, this is brought up, if you guys want a specific, then I'll be able to.
Yeah.
Because I, right now, I, when I have it, I refer to Linda.
Yeah.
Saying I have a specific question, but I can get some sheets together so that I know what they're using.
But for, I mean, I, but what, I think, well, I got my bill in, I got my bill in my box. I think. For November. We used six units at our house. And that's with a teenage daughter that seems to shower at least once a day. Um, and has clothes that she wears for three hours, and that means they're dirty. So, you know, if we were to apply a nickel on water and a nickel on wastewater for our house. On that bill, that would have been an increase of sixty cents. That would go into this fund.
Are you talking about increasing it by that much, or taking that much out of?
No, it would be, it would be an increase. It would be a nickel on a unit of water and a nickel on a unit of wastewater. Which, and the reason why I'm saying that is, is particularly for businesses, manufacturers. They don't use as much wastewater as they do water. If they're using our water in production, if they're cooling something down, that water that they're using now is steam. And it's not coming out as wastewater, so for those users, we bill, we have water units and we have wastewater units, right?
Yeah, we have meters on both ends.
Yeah. So, yeah. Yes. So, um, yeah, it's not like a residential where we just, unless you're filling a pool. We make the assumption that the water that you had coming in is also wastewater that you had coming out.
Because I only have one concern, and I don't know whether, whether or not we can do. Okay, this fund, the fund. You said can be used for like water and wastewater utilities or something like that, but then it's also used for.
If we wanted to. If somebody wanted to buy a piece of ground. That's, uh, outside the city limits. And they wanted to put in an industrial park. We could perhaps use money from this fund to run a utility to them. With the understanding then that they're gonna annex that piece of ground into the city. For its use as an industrial park.
And I understand that, but isn't there also an incentive that money given to like the industrial user coming in for like a tax break or something?
That's what I'm saying.
That's what he's wanting.
That's what I'm saying, for, for, for infrastructure and incentive purposes. This is a non-tax revenue source that would be available.
What, what concerns me is can you use utility rates to finance that type of venture?
Yes.
You can't, legally.
It's not, in other municipalities in the state of Ohio.
Because I know they're real funny about, you know, I mean, you know, using utility money in general fund or something like that. Yeah, it's gotta be segregated, that, that's.
But that's what it would be, it would be segregated to go into a specific fund that is used for economic development.
Well, it's already.
Tax incentive, we've already got the one, the camera. What I think the mayor is talking about is this is a.
Which is a finite amount of money, and once it's gone.
Once it's gone, it's gone, just what, what he's really proposing or looking for is that this will be the fund. That continues so that that camera money goes down the tube, we still got this coming in over here to help us.
I think it's already segregated.
Yes.
Because you answered our question there. So we, it will go into the city too, it will be.
If it's used for utilities, I have no problem running the water lines, sewer lines. If it's used to reimburse someone on, uh, moving into town or.
Their taxes?
Their taxes or something.
Tax break.
Yeah, if that's.
You don't like it.
I don't.
Well, I think it's a valid question, I think we probably need to get the law director to take a look at it, make sure it's legal, because, I mean, we assume that other municipalities are doing it legally, but you find.
I know, I know other municipalities are doing it, but we, you know.
I know it's under revised code.
It doesn't necessarily mean that they, you know, we just.
I mean, I, I've just always been taught, you know, ever since, you know, that when you use utilities money, collect money for utilities, it's for utilities.
Purely specifically allocated. It's almost more like a forced collection, instead of going out and saying, here's what we'd like to do, citizens, we'd like to, you know.
We'd like to give us a half a percent tax increase.
So we can put it into, into this fund, instead we're gonna, we're gonna sneak through the, made sneaky. We're just gonna sneak through the water rates, we could do the same thing with the EMS billing for that sake too. Me, because it's not a tax, so we could take that money and use it for the same thing. And that kind of brings me back to what we talked about earlier about when you said, well, we want to run this line for the clarifier now, or when we have the money. We've got six hundred thousand dollars in there, if we don't use it for stabilizing the budget, if that point in time comes, we could always find other sources to reach.
Mayor, if that fund builds up, and let's say.
Wait, 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 say that last part of that one more time.
Find other funds, I mean, we could get creative, for lack of a better term, we could get rid of, we can, we can take money out of EMS billing. And use a hundred percent of that to, to do what you just said, and take money out of the general fund. To cover what we're doing with the EMS billing money, really.
May, maybe, maybe, I'd have to check on that, I, I don't know. I mean, in theory, that is a non-tax revenue source, and I, I have to check.
Use it for that, mayor, what's that? There's a possibility we could use that EMS bill, bill market, that's a.
Yeah.
Hey, you might have created a monster that I'm gonna say.
No, 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 wait a minute.
We've got to figure out.
Back up just a second.
It's not, it's like a tip, but it's not, it's not tax money.
I have a quick question for the mayor. If this fund builds up, and let's say we got, we don't have, we haven't had any industry or whatever, and there's like a million dollars. I mean, that's a lot, but, or seven hundred thousand or whatever, and we have a major improvement. Well, let's say we have something that needs to be done at either at the wastewater plant, or we had a major failure, something happened. Can we use that money and bring it back in utilities?
Sure.
Or does it have to?
Let me check on that.
Does it have to stay there?
I would, I would think, I would think, and again, here's what you need to, and here's where the tie-in is with utilities as opposed to EMS. If we're able to, sure, now I understand it, and, and not random, so I'm not trying to put it right.
Why, if you have the possibility, and we're looking, I don't care, we might as well. Call a spade a spade, but we've got to come up with some kind of ways to get money. Not only for the economic development of, but there is infrastructure, there's paving of the streets and curbs.
And can't look at that.
I'm just saying, infrastructure.
Doc, stop for a second, and let me explain why I'm saying, why I'm thinking utilities. Again, I'll go back to this idea. If our goal with incentives is to have business development, businesses are utility customers.
Right.
This is not a totally unrelated thing, this is not something that's completely unrelated to the health of our water and wastewater systems. If we can encourage customers into the system, that's a good thing. That, and, and I'll, and I'll say it again, what that does for everyone that's a customer in the city of Heath is it creates a downward pressure. On utility rate increases. Exactly, exactly. So, that's why it's not totally unrelated, it's not, it's, 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 in my opinion, not a. Totally disjointed use of that money. If it can be used to run lines to areas, or to have economic development incentive packages with businesses.
Industrial economic goal, more specifically, just what your hat is on, right?
Which, exactly, I mean, that's what our goal is.
But I think at the beginning of each year, when you make a budget, you've got to earmark that money. You just can't build it up with that and put it in a fund, you've got to earmark it.
Well, no, what hopefully will happen is that we, in, we incentivize businesses to come here. And that every year, we are paying them, well, not every year, you know, for whatever the term of the economic development agreement would be.
Every year.
We're paying, e- e- exactly, we're, so hopefully, as money comes in, at least some of that money would be going out. In the incentives that brought those customers on to the system, see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I know, you know, I'm talking about in the county, you know, that we have to prove to the state, you know, we have to earmark it all, we can't have a slush fund.
When you're saying paying them.
Grant, an economic development incentive, grant, granting back to them a portion of payroll taxes that they pay.
Coming from the utility fund.
Yes. To bring that customer into the, to bring that customer into the system. To bring that customer into the system that's using fifty units a month, a hundred units a month, two hundred units a month.
We're just adding a nickel onto it, we're not taking anything away from what you've got right now. It'd be different if we were saying, we want to take a nickel out of.
Well, wait, wait, wait.
It's not that I'm totally against it, I'm not totally against it.
Make sure you understand what we're talking about here, if our, our, our high, we have one rate in water, up to five hundred units.
Right.
Okay? A water customer, and we have two customers in this city that use over five hundred units. Up to five hundred units, if it's a nickel, we're talking about twenty-five dollars more on that five hundred unit water bill. That's not, that is not something that's even gonna be noticed. By those high-end users. And in my case, again, since I'm water and wastewater.
But mayor, that nickel goes on the residential customers too.
That would be sixty cents. Absolutely, I said, mine would be sixty cents more that I paid on my sixty-some dollar utility bill for this month.
Are we talking nickel or a dollar?
A nickel on water, a nickel on wastewater.
For residential, it's a dollar.
Yes. Yeah.
Why wouldn't you just make it a nickel on water? Since we're looking to attract water users. We have an overabundance.
Are you looking to attract water users or wastewater users? I mean, I don't know, you use both, right? When an industry goes in, you hope they use both.
Yeah, right, you hope that they do.
But we have an overabundance of water capacity, we don't want some wastewater perspective, so we're looking for enhanced attraction. For high-end unit water users, not high-end wastewater users, which can't handle that kind of.
Would you like to have that problem? Would you like to have that problem in wastewater?
To me, to me, you, you can't get an industry come in and just offer them water.
No.
You got, you gotta give them both.
Oh, sure.
So, to me, if you're gonna do the nickel on water, I'm gonna do it on wastewater too, because. They're not gonna come in just ask for water, not ask any way to get rid of the water, have any way to get rid of the water, that's my personal opinion.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, they would prob, if they needed to, they'd probably sink their own processed water well.
They would do that, and do the sewage.
And, and want wastewater.
The whole purpose of the ten cents is to start looking at the six hundred and twenty-five thousand that's gonna go away.
Hopefully.
Where's it gonna go?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, where's it going? That's my, I want to.
And it's a revolving fund. If, if we lend it.
If we lend it.
But for goodness sakes, we're, we're talking about doing that, we're only putting three percent of the capital improvements, I mean, it's like we're. I know it's great to want to.
Because capital improvements comes out of the general fund.
I think grants out of that should be few and far between.
A revolving fund, where it's a loan, makes a whole lot more sense.
It's the same concept the SBA's used for a bazillion years.
Costs me fifty cents a month, it costs.
Kind of doing with that.
Twenty-five dollars.
Fifty dollars a month.
Well, fifty, yeah.
Who set the precedent in municipalities like this?
I don't know, where have I seen this? I can't remember, I, I don't, I have to back track, I have to see, yeah.
I, I will tell you in support of what Mark's saying, I've been at the table when site selectors come to town, and they're looking at the package. And they're making decisions based on who can offer me the most.
That's true.
And having something that is not being offered down the street is a feather in our pack. Yeah, so, you know, if you want to be creative and innovative, we have to look at different options, and I'm not saying, I mean, we don't have all the detail on this, I'm not saying this is it. But I'm saying, in support of what he's trying to do, I've been there, and I know what they're looking for. And I'm saying in support of what he's trying to do, I've been there, and I know what they're looking for.
I understand what he's trying to do, and I'm not, I'm not against it totally. I just worry about some, some stuff, you know, I mean, some portions of that.
Yeah.
Like what?
The grant portion of it. When you just...
But, but yours is not going away, John. You, 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 I think, are thinking that ten cents is, is going away. You're still gonna be collecting your money, and it's still gonna build your fund. Your fund keeps growing.
Doug, there's only so many nickels you can add on. Okay, we're, our water rates are going up next, next year, again. And, and, and administrative charters are going up again next year. You know, you have a two dollar and something on your bill, it's going up again next year because we're financing the work that's being done at the water plant. And I'm all for the mayor wanting to disincentive. I, I agree a hundred percent. I think, I think we should be able to run water lines, and we should be able to run sewer lines. But when you're just paying someone, uh, an, an industry for coming in, money that's not going directly back into utilities, that concerns me a little bit.
They're gonna be a user.
Yeah, but they're not ma, yeah, I, I know what John's coming from. I just have a hard time telling people that...
Match funding.
Yeah, that's true.
That's if you've got six hundred thousand dollars.
John, I mean, it's just, I mean, everyone out there, it's like, your water bill's gonna go up, so we may be able to give money as an incentive to somebody that may come into the city, that maybe do this, that may keep the water rates low, that may do this, and they're looking at...
And is that money, can that money ever be used for anything other than those incentive, I mean, that incentive, that incentive program? Like, if we need something really bad in water or wastewater, we had a, something explode down there, or, I mean, I don't know what. I mean, can that money be used, or is that just designated for that, and it can never be used for utilities, the plant, anything like that?
That's all how we draw up the legislation.
And we, and we haven't used, if we got six hundred thousand, I don't know where that figure came from, but if we have six hundred thousand, we use that. Stabilization. If that's, if that's, if that's what can be used now, and we haven't used a penny of it yet, and we're trying to figure out how to replace six hundred thousand, I mean, I think that's...
We're going into that every year.
We can go into that every year. That's why it's went from a million down to six hundred and twenty-five thousand.
So, essentially, you wanna balance the budget by adding more money onto the utility rates, because they use that money for...
So, that money's going away.
No, Tim, that's not at all the case. If this camera, no. If this camera money goes away, we have no economic incentive package, period. Okay, right now, you can take that money and put it in a separate fund and say, we're never gonna touch it, just like you would ta, take his five cents and never touch it, other than for his, you could do that right now and never touch it for balancing the budget or anything else. If you wanted to do it and keep that money only for the incentive package, you could do that right now. I'm saying is, so you don't wanna do that, you wanna use that money and then replenish it, so to speak, by putting a nick, nickel on all the water users. I mean, if you're gonna put a nickel, why don't you put a dime or a dollar? I mean, we could just slap it on there, no one, I mean, they'd have to have a referendum to take it off. We built up all kinds of money. I mean, and then start using, I mean, there's all kinds of ways. Every time we put a water line, we say, we're gonna put a new water line down the road, we're gonna pay the rate because we messed up the rate by doing it. And we can figure out all kinds of ways to circumvent the, you know, only using water for water and wastewater for wastewater and general budget, not using it for that. I mean, you can get creative, all kinds of ways. I mean, thinking outside the box, I can think outside the box pretty good. I'm just saying, I'd have a hard time telling someone, we got six hundred thousand budget stabilization, but we're gonna raise your water bill, even if it's only sixty cents. Someone will take that sixty cents and multiply it times their sixty, you know, their user amount and figure it's a X percent rate or increase. I just, I mean, now, if we had a whole bunch of money and the money was down to almost nothing, and we've had three new companies come in because they used it, and it's like, okay, now we can see it's working, then I could be talking about this, but right now, I think you're, we're jumping the gun, trying to replace six hundred thousand, when we don't have any, do we have anyone that we're giving a package to? I don't wanna talk about that in an open meeting. Okay. I, I'll talk about that one-on-one. You know. I don't wanna talk about that in an open meeting.
How much, how much will a dime create?
A year, roughly seventy.
Seventy thousand. So, why don't we just carve out seventy grand out of the six hundred, and just park it in an account and call it what we've got? And we can manage it that way.
What I would say is...
Before we start implementing additional costs onto our users.
I mean, I guess, whether it's this or something else, I don't think we should wait until we get that six hundred thousand down to a very low number and try to think of what we're gonna do to replenish it, because that's kinda like...
Every year.
Yeah, it's kinda like having a 401K and losing your job and saying, well, I'll look for a job when 401K's gone, then you got nothing.
At the end, it's his problem.
He has to do that.
It's all our...
No, it's not. No, it's not a problem. That's his job, is to balance a budget, and if we don't wanna spend the six hundred thousand dollars to budget, to balance it, then we don't touch it. But if we're in that big a, uh, heartache, and they didn't want to do a tax rate increase, then all we're doing is just going out and benefiting the system to get another dime a unit out of the citizens. And there's no way I'm supporting a tax rate increase. I didn't wanna support the one John did, so, but I'm only one vote, so. It's crazy. Just the same concept. Mayor, you told John, let's not put this water pipe in here, because if we really need to add that pipe, look at the revenue we're gonna be having coming in. Well, if we, exhaust is six hundred thousand dollars in this program you're talking about, don't use it for anything else, but if we exhaust it in that, then we're, the revenue's gonna be up. We're gonna be able to say, hey, citizens, like you said, we wanna, if we wanna put some more money into this fund, because it's worked.
Well, you know what? That's an attitude that past councils did to us. That's the reason we're in a position where today, they didn't plan ahead. You go back and look at the record.
How much is in the water capital for the fund? How much is in the wastewater capital?
That's when we had water, when we had water... We could've raised water rates back in nineteen sixty and had everything paid for, but that council didn't do it.
We just raised the water rates.
I'll talk about years ago. You can't do it one year.
We use existing money. We use existing money that's already been paid in.
We had to get a income tax to pay for the water problem.
Futuristic industrial.
Because we didn't charge.
There's not a lot of money in this fund. I mean, is there, I, I, I don't have any with me.
Between the two of them, there's seventy grand in float money that we can use for a concept like this, or not?
No, that's a cool.
I'm just looking at all the angles.
I normally have a list of...
All the angles in lieu of a rating increase. Every angle in lieu of a rating increase, just exhaust. Every possible, I love your idea.
Yeah.
It's out of the box thinking. Everybody wants to, to tax breaks in it about. This is a little different way to maybe win tiebreak. I love the idea. I love your thinking. But what are the other ways that we can accomplish that?
This is what I'm trying to say. We don't, we, we don't have many at all, because John Roth's office has very low fees, and that's good. That's, that's good too.
That's an enhancement.
That's, John, John's office has very low fees.
It's an enticement to come here. I'm gonna kill you, come at these, just to walk in the door and think about doing what you wanna do.
Yeah.
We're very open arms for that.
Yeah, we got it.
Let's just, I just won't exhaust every angle. You say there are not many, but okay, that means we have some.
Well, I said, Brian mentioned EMS, but I, I don't know if you could. I don't know.
And believe me, I was suggesting that. I guess when I was looking at...
Hey, but that, but that cash out, thank, baby.
But like you said, but it's true. I mean, there's more than just water wastewater that we could get that's a non-tax revenue source, although I understand what you're saying is that when we wanna make improvements for commercial or industrial users, those improvements really fall upon more water wastewater, and I'm sure that's why you were going there.
They bring in, they bring in customers.
That's right, and I'm not beating up the idea at all. I mean, I mean, that's, you're thinking, you're thinking...
Water capital improvements, you have about three hundred and sixty-five thousand. And wastewater capital improvements, it looks to me like you have about a hundred and some thousand.
We're gonna have million dollars.
And it's the tap fees that go into that? Tap fees paid by new users coming onto the system?
That makes more sense of a match fund than raising utilities.
It just looks like water, three sixty-five, wastewater, just maybe around a hundred thousand, ninety thousand.
A little less.
And am I wrong, like, this, this year, maybe I'm wrong, I mean, are you gonna have to get into budget stabilization this year?
I don't believe so.
That's gonna be, that's nice, that's a plus.
So, we've already got increases already on books for...
I think I hit it because I'm water myself, because I don't throw anything out.
Exhaust every...
And, and Brian, I, I got something for you, and, and Tim and Jeff, if you could hang around just for a minute, two, like, five minutes or so. Okay, and I, I got something for you.
It's not a picket badge, is it?
Yeah?
That's gonna step on it.
Thanks for one possession, six forty-nine.
Just, 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 I got our female arts council now, and, you know, with all the...